You'll please stand.
Pray with me, please. Father, you said in your word long time ago that trouble don't last always. And Father, we come just right now asking you to bless our person next to me, Councilman McGee and his family. Father, we ask that you help them during this time of trouble. That trouble is the loss of a son. Father, we know that it is a difficult time, and so we ask you to be with him, be with his family, and keep him in the hollow of your hands. And now, Father, we ask you to bless us as we begin our council meeting. Bless our mayor, bless all the rest of the council members, bless our city manager. And of course, don't forget our fire chief and our police chief and all of those that put their lives on the line. Father, we ask that you continue to be with us as we go forth today to make policies and procedures that will help every single person in our great city. And Father, let me be just a little selfish by saying, give us an extra special blessing for District Three. This is my prayer in the name of those who calm the raging waters and said to us, "Peace be still." In the name of Jesus, we pray. And let my Father's children say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I guess as we go around the dice and do the prayers, each person needs to pray for their individual districts.
I pray for every citizen, but especially for District Three.
We're going to begin with the minutes from March 27th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. All of those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for some awards. Don't hit the tension of the wires. All right. First one we got is Billy Yates. Assistant Police Chief, 25 years of service. I feel tall. And next, we have Heather Nick, Assistant City Manager, 20 years of service. I'll take that. There's no money in there. And we also had Sean Wilson, Fire Battalion Chief, 25 years of service. They can't be here, but still want to recognize him. And these three people represent 70 years of service. And it seems like there's so many meetings that we have that we continue to recognize people with long terms of service. And that says something about, I think, the city and people that have the longevity. And so just thank you for sticking in. Thank you for your service. I mean, y'all make Tyler what it is. So thank you for your loyalty. All right. P1, Kate.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
So in 2017, the City of Tyler entered into a consent decree with the Environmental Protection Agency to address the city's aging wastewater collection system and resulting discharges. As a part of this consent decree, condition assessments and hydraulic constraints are being addressed. Pipeline Analysis has worked hand in hand with us to perform these condition assessments. Pipeline Analysis in the last few years has taken a larger role as a program manager, assisting our staff Tiffany Curry and Sam Gary in managing and tracking the massive amount of work being done in the collection system. So Jim Forbes, working with us since the beginning of this consent decree, is here to provide you with an update on the Tyler Water Utilities Consent Degree Program.
Thanks, Kate. Mayor, Council, I'm here to give you an update on the status of the consent decree. On April 10th of this year, we entered year eight of the consent decree. So we've gone through seven years on a 10-year consent decree. But I want to bring your attention to the fact that in the consent decree, it's a 10-year consent decree, but you have to comply for one year after you're in compliance. So it's really an 11-year consent decree. So you have to be in compliance for one year after you've met the requirements of the consent decree. So we're, and I can tell you today that we're on schedule to meet those requirements. Most important metric that EPA uses is sanitary sewer overflows. A well-performing system will average around five SSOs per 100 miles of sewer. The trend since 2017 is downward. It's downward by 45%. With ongoing repairs and now capacity improvements underway, this trend will continue to improve. We did have a bump in 2023 and are currently at 2.2 SSOs for 100 miles through March of this year. In April, we've had three additional SSOs, so we're actually up to 2.6 as of today. Let's look a little closer at what caused the bump in 2023. Largest contributor to SSOs in 2023 was fat oils and grease that enter the collection system. Fat oil and grease primarily from restaurants and apartments enter the system and create blockages and can result in SSOs. Staff have stepped up inspections of grease traps and issued more written notices of violation. In 2022, there were 12 fat oil and grease-related SSOs. In 2023, we had 21, an increase of 175%. Grease interceptors are just that. It's a device to intercept the grease before it gets into the sanitary sewer. Food service establishments, grease interceptors are being inspected at least once a year and more frequently for those with violations of the sewer use ordinance that requires them to pump out accumulated grease from grease traps. Failure to adequately clean out those grease traps allows grease to fall into the sanitary sewer and causes blockages and results in SSOs. TW has outreach programs in place to address high grease trouble areas such as apartments, schools, cafeterias. And you have ongoing communications with the food service establishments to make sure they're following the procedures, to make sure that grease stays in the grease trap and not into your sewer. Another program the city has implemented is high-frequency pipe cleaning. Some sewers collect debris because of very low flows, because they're on very flat slopes or root accumulation. Where blockages reoccur, the line is put on a high-frequency cleaning list. In some instances, the pipe is defective and is placed on the high-frequency cleaning list until repairs can be made to prevent that from happening again. This preventive maintenance work is a critical component to minimize the SSOs and achieve compliance. City staff perform the cleaning and maintain a history of these repairs. And that map shows highlighted areas of lines that are on the high-frequency cleaning list. It's a pretty involved program, and there's a lot of lines that are on there. As they're approved, they are taken off that line. But it's a problem that occurs in cities, and this high-frequency cleaning program is very important to minimize those SSOs. To date, we've inspected 11,800 manholes in the system. This was completed in 2021. Reinspection of those manholes has to start this year, according to the consent decree. So they're on a seven-year cycle to reinspect, and the intent is to find defects in manholes while it's fairly small and less expensive to repair. So it's a preventive maintenance program that now is going into the next phase of reinspections. Pipe cleaning, according to the consent decree, you have to inspect every inch of the 718 miles of sewer in your system. This year, we'll complete that inspection. So in 2024, we will have inspected all the sewers in the wastewater collection system. And that condition, those condition assessments, then drive repairs to those main lines. Consent decree remedial measures for Groups 1 and 4 have been completed along with force main and air release valve repairs. Capacity projects are where existing sewers are undersized for existing current and future flows. KSA has completed various projects while others are in construction and design. Group 5 rehabilitation is well underway. The Langdon Group 6 rehabilitation is on schedule and in design. So there's a lot of projects still going on out there in these last few years of work. Smoke testing forces smoke into the sewer, and it exits through various defects. If smoke exits, then rainwater can enter the sewer system. Langdon is performing the design and oversees the construction associated with the private lateral program. Many defects on the private laterals have been attributed to missing cleanout caps. To date, we have replaced 2,903 cleanout caps that were missing, which allowed rainwater to get into the collection system. Recent submittals, based on the last couple of years of construction experience, we, along with staff and consultants, added narrative to the 2023 EPA-TCQ annual report to address possible construction delays due to construction material availability, specifically pumps, generators, and electrical components. The anticipated construction schedule for Group 2 capacity projects has been adjusted due to delays for land acquisition, for required easements, and for obtaining railroad crossing permits. You don't put a sewer underneath a railroad without going through a long, lengthy permit process. So it's taken some time, and getting easements is taking extra time. We want EPA and TCQ to be notified as early as possible that a small number of capacity projects' schedules may be delayed. Whether they're delayed or not, it's too early to tell, but we want to make sure we're on record that, yes, there could be delays due to these obtaining materials or acquisition of easements. To date, all report deliverables required in the consent decree have been delivered on time. Groups 1, 2, 3, and 4 rehabilitation is completed within the required consent decree time. Capacity design and construction projects are progressing on schedule with the possibility of delays on specific projects due to easement acquisition and material lead times. Okay, pop quiz. If you laid all the City of Tyler mainline sewer end to end, it would reach from Tyler to A, Dallas, Houston, New Orleans, Denver, infinity and beyond.
New Orleans.
Denver.
Denver.
Atlanta.
Denver, 718 miles. If you put it end to end, and remember, your staff's responsibilities are maintaining 718 miles of sewer. Let's say you start walking from Tyler today. By the time you get to Denver, you've looked at it once. It's a huge undertaking, what's underground, out of sight, and out of mind. And if we add private laterals in there, it's now 1,200 miles. So it's a huge undertaking. And we have a couple other things. The sanitary sewer continues to expand and is tracking population growth. Each year, the amount of sewer increases. The good news is the new sewer is in excellent condition. The bad news is the old sewer is still getting older. When we started in 2017, it was only estimated, because we didn't have a lot of GIS maps at the time, that you had 650 miles of sewer. Well, we documented 718. And that's probably a much more accurate number of what's actually underground. If we look at your sewer system, these are photographs from Tyler. Tyler Sewer dates back to 1916. And this picture of 1951, you can see that trench safety wasn't a big issue back then. But your sewers are getting older. So how do we maintain these sewers? This is a typical performance curve. Your sewer starts out brand-new. And remember, it was built in 1916, some of the sewers. This could be your automobile or your sewer. When new, your 1916 Ford is in excellent condition. As it ages, it deteriorates until, if you don't do anything, it'll fail. So how do we maintain the system? We perform periodic maintenance. You can perform periodic maintenance for rehabilitation. The 1916 car undergoes preventive maintenance and restoration. The sewer undergoes preventive maintenance and rehabilitation. That's how we extend the life of these assets another 100 years. And we start looking at life after the consent decree. We have 718 miles of sanitary sewer mains, and it's increasing each year. We have an aging infrastructure. We'll continue to require preventive maintenance and repair. You have a very excellent asset management system, and construction costs will continue to increase. The programs that the city has implemented, the staff has implemented with the consent decree, will need to continue. And that includes the high-frequency cleaning program, the fat oil and grease program, sustainable capacity management, operation, and maintenance, ongoing asset condition assessment and rehabilitation program to extend the life of the assets and monitor sanitary sewer overflows and take corrective action when they occur. Right now, when there's a sanitary sewer overflow, it's put on an immediate list to TV that line, find out the primary cause of it, and so we can find out a solution to it so it doesn't become a reoccurring problem. Finally, the cost for infrastructure maintenance will continue to increase. There's no getting around it. Everything else is increasing. Materials are becoming harder to locate and source. But costs are going up significantly since 2017. Since 2017, you have come a long way in achieving compliance with consent decree. This has truly been a team effort of staff working with consultants and contractors and design. The consent decree has touched every city department. I say it's literally touched every city department. Maybe not the library, but it has touched all the other departments. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and that tunnel is called compliance. You're moving along with compliance. You're where you need to be. You're making excellent progress. As long as that trend continues downward, EPA and TCQ are going to be happy. With that, any questions?
Well, good report. In 2023, we talked about 21 SSOs for fat oil and grease. Are those in recurring areas? Is there a culprit out there?
I would say there are several bad actors. There are some restaurants that just plain don't get it. So staff sits down with them, explains why it needs to happen, why they need to clean out that grease trap at least every 90 days, if not sooner. If they still don't pay attention, then the city will issue a notice of violation. And usually, that will be enough to get them to start doing what they need to be, because the city will be reinspecting those grease traps. And if they continue in noncompliance, then you can get the Health Department involved. And then you can really do some action. But that's not the intent. The intent is to just comply with the ordinance that Deborah helped get through early on in this program and just enforce the ordinance. And that's what they're doing now. So yeah, there are a few bad actors, but the majority of them, sit down with them, explain what you're trying to accomplish, and they tend to become compliant.
There is no more stubborn group than those guys.
There's no more what?
Stubborn group than restaurant people.
Jim, question for you on the high-frequency cleaning, and especially those areas that are repeated. Is there concern over damaging the pipe?
There is always concern when you put 2,500 pounds per square inch of water pressure to clean the line. The staff is very well-trained on the use of those type of equipment. So with clay pipe, you can destroy a pipe pretty fast with that type of equipment. So the staff has experience, and hopefully, we can maintain that staff, because other cities are trying to hire people away all the time. But yes, there is concern there. So it's a matter of training to make sure that they don't destroy the pipe. If they clean the line and they start seeing sections of pipe coming back, then they know, okay, well, we're going to have to TV that line to find out what we can do. Now, that cleaning list, that high-frequency cleaning list, some lines are on a three-month return period cycle. Some six months, some annual. But these are where there's reoccurring problems. And the staff has recognized that, and you try to fix the ones that you can. But if it's on a slope that is flat as a table, then you're stuck with it. So it becomes a continual maintenance issue. And that might date back to 1916.
Jim, do you mind scanning back to that very first photograph that you showed, please?
Let's see if I can... Very beginning? Oh, past it?
Where the men are working.
Right there?
One more, go back. That right there.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And those are all from Tyler?
Yes, I know. That's why I wanted to say.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. Jim, for the fat oil and grease, that being 37% of the, I guess, problem that we're experiencing, is the five SSO metric in your experience, does that mean, is that a doable? Unachievable?
It is. That's kind of the baseline that EPA uses. I know that cities we work with in North Texas, they're in the 1 and 2 SSOs per 100 miles. But then again, their sewers aren't from 1916. They're all plastic pipe. They're from the '70s and '80s. So they don't have the age that your system has. So yes, there are systems that can meet that. You're never going to eliminate your SSO. You're never going to get down to zero. So five is our goal. And that's the goal that EPA kind of benchmarks.
Five per 100?
Miles.
So then 35 a year. Five times 700 miles, is that something? Five, 100 miles, that's 700 miles of pipe, 35 SSOs a year.
Correct. That's correct. And remember, an SSO is one drop of wastewater that exits the manhole or exits the sewer. It's not based on volume. Your volume of SSOs, since we started the consent decree, is down magnitudes in volume. The SSOs...
It's just the incident itself.
It's the incident itself.
Was there any recommendation or any action taken to where the local Health Department inspects restaurants on an annual basis or semi-annual basis that they review the paperwork associated with the pumping of their grease traps?
As far as I know, there's no procedure for that, no process for that. I think what the city or what the TW currently does is if they have an actor that's bad, they'll try to work it out with them internally. But if they fail to do that, then I think the next step, and I don't think they've had to yet, is then go to the Health Department and try to get the Health Department to assist in convincing them that they need to do something different.
Any other questions for Tim? Okay, great presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Bad actors, restaurant people.
All right, Kyle, Z1.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. First item is a request for a closure of two unapproved rights-of-way, the Turon Drive and the Turon Court. These are off of Haverhill Drive on the east side of the city. These two streets were planned or laid out for a prior or previous development. The current developer plans to do something different with the property, and so they are requesting to close these rights-of-way. As you can see, they're currently not constructed. And the planning commission recommended approval of this request, contingent that on the rights-of-way being replanted within six months.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z1.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All of those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This is a request for a zone change from C1 Light Commercial District to R1D Single Family Attached and Detached District. This is to bring the existing single-family home into conformance with the code. All the surrounding properties to the west, east, and south are zoned for commercial use, but there is a mixture of commercial property and single-family homes. Then to the north is zoned for duplex development. This request is consistent with the Land Use Guide, identifying it as medium to high-density single-family. As you can see here, there is a home on these properties that for financing reasons, they need to correct this. And so this is the appropriate means to do that. Of the notices that were sent out, number returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the planning commission recommends approval of this zone change.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All of those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This is a request for a zone change from C2 General Commercial District to RMF Multi-Family on the East Loop. This is to allow for the development of an apartment complex. Surrounded properties are generally commercial in nature. There is residential to the west, but there is a large floodplain that separates or acts as a buffer between the commercial and the residential use. This request is in conjunction with a tax credit project that City Council approved a resolution of support a few months ago or a couple months ago. And so they are requesting to make this change. However, the applicant wants to see how that tax credit project plays out and see if they can get that financing first before actually rezoning the property. But making this request was part of their requirements for that. And so the planning commission recommended approval of it. But at this time, the applicant's requesting to table this request indefinitely to see how that other process plays out.
Any questions for Kyle?
So moved.
Do we need to table that?
For how long indefinitely?
Indefinitely, yeah.
Move to table Z3.
Indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
That's longer than 12 months. Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis, to table this indefinitely. All of those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z4.
This is a request for a zone change from R1A Single Family to C1 Light Commercial. This is at the corner of Old Chandler Highway and the South-Southwest Loop. The applicant's requesting this change to allow for commercial development on this property. As you can see, there are many other commercial properties at this intersection. And so there is residential to the west, but the rest is commercial. This is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, identifying it as mixed-use center. The property, as you see here, does have frontage on Loop 323. And they plan to demolish that structure and market it for commercial use. Of the notices that were sent out, number returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the planning commission recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle? Move to approve, Z4. Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All of those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z5.
This is a zone change request from C1 Light Commercial District to PMXD1 Planned Mixed Use District with a site narrative. This is on Lindsay Lane. This is an existing structure, a commercial structure. And the applicant's requesting this change to allow or to introduce residential to that commercial activity. And so the PMXD1 district would allow for that mixture of residential and commercial use on the property. To the north and east are commercial. To the south is residential. I believe it's a park there. And then to the west is residential as well. This would amend the future... Well, this is consistent with the Land Use Guide as commercial. As you can see here, it's an existing building. And building to the west...
And building to the west is zoned residential, but it also is a commercial structure as The applicant's asking to allow for some of the space in that building to be residential as well as that retail. They will have to comply with all the requirements to convert it to residential as well, but this will achieve that mixture of uses. It's currently C1, so it allows all those C1 uses. This would still allow the C1, but also residential uses, but it will restrict it from having the gas station on the property. There's really no space for that, so that's a restriction there. Of the notices that were sent, number returned in favor or in opposition, and the planning commission recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z5.
Second. Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z6.
This is a zone change request from C1 light commercial to DBAC, DBAC, which is Downtown Business Arts and Culture District. This property is, or the applicant's requesting this change to allow for the development of this property to be either commercial or residential in nature, or maybe a mixture of both, they're not quite sure yet. But this property is located within the downtown planning area, which makes it eligible for that DBAC zoning, which you do see to the southwest there. Generally, the properties in the area are commercial in nature. There's some residential within those commercial zonings. But this request would amend the future land use guide to mixed-use center, which is, again, with it being in the downtown planning area, is consistent with that plan. As you see here, the property does have frontage on Gentry and Harris Avenue, and so the request would allow for the develop, or more flexibility in developing this property for a number of uses. Of the notices that were sent out, number returned in favor or in opposition, and the planning commission recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z6.
Second. Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can you go back one slide? That's a good example of crack seal.
I think we need no related district figure.
Good example of what?
Textile.
Send them our Onyx contractor.
All right. Thanks, Kyle. R1. Oh, it's still you?
I'm going to do R1, yes. R1 is a request that the City Council consider the adoption of a resolution of support for an affordable housing project known as Trailside Estates. The, this is on County Road 164, Mayhar Road. It is within the city limits. The Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas is part of the Federal Home Loan Bank system, and the, that bank does have an affordable housing program that lends funds to assist in the development of affordable housing. This is different than the typical requests that we get from the Department of, or from the 9% tax credit projects that we saw a couple of months ago. This doesn't compete with that. This is a different source of funding. The project that, Trailside Estates, it was formerly known as Celebration Tyler, which the City Council approved for a resolution of support back in 2022. And so the applicant is looking, still trying to get the funding sources to develop that project. And so they're going to layer the tax credit funds with this, hopefully with this funding source as well. But it does require a resolution of support from the local government. So the applicant is requesting that resolution to access those, that funding source to develop that project. And so with that, and the applicant is here, if you have any questions, this is still a 55-plus community that's going to be constructed here. And so it's recommended that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution of support for this project.
Any questions for Kyle or for the applicant that's here?
Nothing's going to change with the project. It's still the same project that we previously approved.
That's my understanding, yes.
I believe that we did this in '22. It was the only one that we did a resolution of support, and we were totally behind it.
Yes, sir.
Still are, so.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Haney, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Good morning again. Excuse me. So in January of this year, the item before you is O1. In January of this year, we retained HAF to work on updating and improving our water conservation and drought contingency plan, which is required to be updated every five years by the Texas Water Development Board. HAF's team was led by Stephanie Griffin, HAF's Director of Water Resources for North Texas. And so she's here to present the updated City of Tyler Water Conservation, Emergency Demand Management, and Drought Contingency Plans.
Good morning.
All right. Well, I'd like to introduce Kaylee Babbitt, who's with me. She has been our project engineer on this update. And then, of course, we've got Michael Medford, who's been one of our technical advisors. So we are excited to help you update this plan. As Kate mentioned, it's required by the state to update every five years, and so you're at that point. It is due to Texas Water Development Board and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality on May 1st, so we're getting real close here on our deadline. We, the plan in front of you actually has three plans in it. It has the water conservation plan, it has a drought contingency plan, and then the emergency demand management plan. They're all in one document. Just as a refresher, water conservation are the measures we take every day to help reduce our water usage and to use water efficiently. So turning the water off when you brush your teeth, those types of activities. Drought contingency plan is what we do when our water supplies start to get low or when we're having issues with a treatment plan or distribution system. Measures that we ask the public to take, they start off voluntary, and then they move into mandatory depending on what's happening. Then the emergency demand measures are the measures that we take when something catastrophic happens to either the supply or the distribution system. And so we'll, I've got a couple of slides on each of these, and we'll walk through those. Feel free to stop me and ask questions if you have any. One of the benefits of having an updated plan is that this makes the city eligible for state funding. It's one of the requirements for certain types of state funding through the Texas Water Development Board. All right. So we have a water conservation plan. You've got four categories of customers. You've had these customers for many, many years, your retail and your wholesale customers. You also have industrial customers and agricultural customers. Well, really, one agricultural customer, it's an irrigation customer. The two customers that were added to the plan are industrial and agricultural. It's nothing new, it's just that they're documented in the plan at this point, or in the proposed plan. And then we've updated the service area map for both the city and your wholesale customers. Conservation goals have to be updated, so you have five-year and 10-year goals in the plan. We looked at your 2019 plan, what your goals were then, how your water usage trended over every year, over the last five years, and then reassessed where those goals really should be, just based on actual usage. So your five and 10-year goals are updated on this slide here. You're showing a decrease in the per-capita use, which is what we're hoping to see. And that is true for your municipal users, your residential, and your wholesale customers. We are working to level out the water loss, that's our goal. It's been on an increasing rate lately, but a lot of that is due to some of what you've heard earlier, aging infrastructure. That was the wastewater presentation, but it's true with your water infrastructure as well. As you have aging infrastructure and water main breaks, you lose water. And so y'all have an active program to address that, and so the goal here is just to level that out over the next five and 10 years. The city has a number of best management practices that are already in place, and these are just documented in the plan. You've got a water rate structure that is, y'all are working towards getting to a flat rate. Ultimately, the state would like to see an increasing block rate, but right now we're aiming towards the flat rate. You've got record management system that uses, that clearly identifies the water usage and by, it's divided up by categories, so that makes it very easy for your staff to report annually to the state on how water is used. It also helps them with their annual water loss audits. You've got a leak detection metering program, a public education outreach program. You do have restrictions in there for water usage that is being wasted, and there are enforcement measures that are allowed and provided for. You have not had to use those lately, but that is in the plan in case you need them. And your contracts with your wholesale water providers require that they implement something similar or more stringent than what you have in place. So once this plan is officially adopted and updated with the state, then we will send it to your wholesale customer, your wholesale customers, and have them adopt something very similar. Some future conservation measures that you might consider, these are in the plan, they're not required, but landscape management measures, so using and recommending drought-tolerant or native plants in the area that use less water. Those are helpful in reducing and using your water more efficiently. And then reuse, and before you panic on that word, this is the rain barrel type reuse, where it collects your runoff from your gutter system, and then you connect it to your irrigation system, and it waters your yard with the runoff from your rooftops. There we go. All right. So do you have any questions on the conservation plan?
No, I'm just curious. How many people use those rain barrels? Is that a...
I don't know if you have any in the city. The picture I showed was actually from Tarrant Regional Water District, so out in the western portion of the Metroplex, they do use them. And I don't know if anybody in the City of Tyler actually uses them yet.
I've got two.
Okay. Nikki has some, and I didn't even realize that.
Oh, Julie has, she knows stuff. So two people over two years. All right. Go.
So the landscape recommendation, I mean, how does that get from the plan to the homeowner?
It's part of your public outreach program.
Okay.
Yep.
Just commercials and like, what is, what, how?
Yeah, what types of plants are recommended? There are a variety of resources.
How do you find out about that? How do I find out about this? I'm not watching this media.
Right. So you could put it in your newsletter, you could put it on your website.
And a couple of different things. So, you know, back to the mayor's question about the reuse of the water barrels from that you can hook up. Keep Tyler Beautiful has promoted those before in the past and given some away, and now you can find those pretty much anywhere of your different hardware-type stores. Kind of to your question, Councilman, on the landscape component, we actually do have in our code of ordinances, recommended plants, trees for builders as they are putting their stuff in, so that way they know what is recommended, what sometimes they get points for, what is it that's, can be handled that as well.
Okay.
All right. The second plan in this document is your drought contingency plan. So this is what we implement when the water supply gets low or when the treatment capacity has a challenge. And your current plan has four stages, and we are recommending that we switch that down to three. That is what Upper Natures River Municipal Water Authority is using in their plan, and that's who has the water rights in and your contract is with for the Lake Palestine water. And then that is also what the State of Texas recommends, is a three-phase or a three-stage plan. So we have adjusted this to reflect both of those recommendations. Then we've got initiation and termination stages, or markers for what has to happen before you've really hit that stage, and then you make the decision, are we really ready to make, to implement this stage or not, or can we cancel it? There are goals for water savings for each of the stages. If you don't see them, then you can move on down to the next drought stage. You've also got enforcement capabilities. There are surcharges for those who continue to use water despite the enforcement, and there is a variance option in case someone has a unique situation where they have a rational reason for needing to use water when you're asking people to conserve. The first stage is a mild stage, and it's voluntary. All the requested actions in there are voluntary. When you get to stages two and three, those are mandatory restrictions, and at that point your drought is getting worse and worse. In the last five years, you have not had to start, or you have not had to implement your drought contingency plan. You get a lot of rainfall out here, and so the drought does not affect you like it does other parts of the state, but it is a required plan.
So if the previous plan had four stages, this has three?
Yes.
What, which plant, which stage got cut out?
So we just merged three and four together.
Sorry?
We merged three and four together.
Okay.
Any other questions on drought? That's the only slide I have for drought. Okay.
That's good.
I'm going to move on to your emergency demand management plan. So this is the third and final plan in this document. So this gets implemented when you have something catastrophic happen to either your water supply or your treatment distribution system. You have enacted this plan in the last five years when you've had water main breaks, and it usually affects a portion of the city. And so these have mandatory restrictions that have to be implemented so that your crews can get in there and fix whatever is broken. Again, there are mandatory requirements that have to take place, there is enforcement, there are surcharges that can be placed on folks if they decide not to comply. There is, of course, a variance as well. So this is something that you have enacted, but it's not been a regular issue. So do you have any questions on this?
Does this deal at all with security at the water treatment plants?
This does not deal with security. Now, if there was, are you talking like contamination?
No, well, that or hacking, you know, computers and all that kind of stuff.
Chlorine tanks that sit out there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there was, I read an article recently concerned about the possibility of taking over systems like that in water. But if it didn't, but if it doesn't pertain to that, it doesn't.
No, this plan doesn't address that.
It doesn't address it, but that is a serious issue.
It is a serious issue, and we do take that very, we have completed, we've completed a vulnerability assessment.
Right. It's not this document's responsibility to deal with that.
No, but we do have per WIFIA, we have our AWA infrastructure and cybersecurity plan that we work on with the emergency response plan as well. So, yes.
Do we have something in place, or are we putting something in place, or is there a program that we could get where if a catastrophic failure occurs or a water main break happens, we know where it is happening, we are immediately notified, so it's not, hey, it's somewhere in this vicinity, or 45 minutes later we find out? Is there anything like that that we could do?
Well, there are technologies available. They're very expensive, but there are technologies available that can help us monitor real-time pressure at each point in the system. And so there are technologies available that we can do that. I will say, well, we'll talk about it a little, maybe a little bit later, but I will say with the recent main break that we did have, even though it feels like, you know, hours and hours that we're waiting, the response that we had on this recent one was incredible, how fast we were able to find the main break. And it also, you know, the whole system is connected, so we can look at tower levels and all sorts of information.
Kate, can you tell us what that expensive rate is that you just mentioned?
I can't, I can't tell you a cost right now, but I could look into it and find out for you, for sure. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Stephanie, keep going.
All right. Any other questions on the emergency demand management plan? Okay. So as part of the plan development, the State of Texas requires that we have a public comment opportunity, and this is your meeting, but at some point I need to allow for, we need to allow for public comments if there are any, and this would be the time to do so.
So is this to be the same as opening a public hearing, Deborah?
No.
Or just ask for...
It's just public comment.
I don't believe public hearing is required, no, it's not. They can just ask if anybody has any comments on it, anyone wants to speak.
If someone, I would suppose if someone didn't fill out a card, they could still speak to it at this time, if they so choose. speak to it at this time, if they so choose.
So, is there anyone out there that wants to speak to this item?
Looks like Stephanie does.
Was there anyone?
Yes, definitely.
Can you, you have to come up here. If you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Petra Hawkins. My address is 3844 at Lamb Drive, title Texas 75709.
Okay.
My question is about the main break recently, if there were measures in place for elderly or people, you know, that needed water, they have to use water for like machines and things in their homes.
Is that a Kate question?
So, can you talk to us?
Yeah. We couldn't hear the question.
Oh, okay. I said, were there measures in place for like the elderly that need water during this main break where we had the boil water notice? This one that over by Sam's.
Right. Kate?
Yeah, so, as far as specific measures, you know, we, we notified the different, the different affected populations. As far as the water, water was available. It was just under a boil water notice. So, specifically, you could get, you could get water for consumption via, there were also some restaurants, I think, that were supplying them for free drinking water. But as far as water for, I guess, different processes at hospitals or elderly care, the water could still be cleaned with the filters, I believe, from those different, different facilities. It was just for consumption, that was the issue.
Anybody else wish to speak?
I just got one, one question for Stephanie. It's April 24th, this is due May 1st, so we're going to rush it to the various people that need this report?
I don't know exactly what you mean by rush it.
Well, you said the report's due May 1st?
Correct.
Okay, so we got time to get it to them?
Yes, yes, yes. We're, the city's staff has been very involved, they've reviewed it several times.
Yes.
And the city attorneys have had a chance to take a look at it and review it as well.
As soon as it's signed, it can be submitted to the TCQ and then TWBB via email. That's how we'll submit it, as soon as it's signed by their ordinance.
All right. Any other questions? Are we good with the public comment section?
If there aren't any other public comments, then I'm, I'm good with the public comment session.
No, no other comments? Okay, we're done with public comments.
Okay, so then the next would be for city council, if you have any questions that weren't already asked and addressed.
Do the wholesale customers know that this is coming, that they're going to have, if they don't already have a plan, that they're going to have to adopt a plan?
Yes, the city staff had reached out to them and requested their current plans, and so they let them know that there would be a new plan coming, because they also have to in turn update their plans.
And as a reminder, this is, this is your five-year update to your, the one that you've had since 2005. So, yes, our wholesale customers have already had to have the.
We don't have customers that don't have a plan.
That is correct. They have to, they have to adopt our plan to be our wholesale customer.
Oh, okay.
And also to kind of go to one of the questions that was earlier, upon adoption, we also update our website to have the, the current plan, thus the one that, you know, consideration for adoption today. That then goes on our website as well for people who are wanting to go in to read this further.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Stephanie? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. You got a motion by McKeller, second by McKee.
Mayor, if I may, could we have a little bit of flexibility in the language in the water conservation and drought contingency and emergency management plan to adjust for any grammar errors or anything along those lines that we may need to adjust in, as part of your motion for approving the plan?
So, can you say what the motion would be specifically, and then someone up here can?
Sure. Okay, so a little.
I would need you to memorize.
I forgot to mention this at the beginning, the city staff ran this by the Texas Water Development Board to see if they had any comments, and they had three comments. They are easy to address, but we need a little flexibility to move some of that language around to an appendix.
I'm not sure how to put that into a motion, Stu.
I make a motion to adopt the water conservation plan as written, with the exception for any future grammatical changes and/or movements to possible appendices that may be needed and/or required.
Oh, wow. That's great. That is great. We just need a little flexibility.
That's plenty.
Did I give you that flexibility?
It does, thank you.
I said this.
Yeah, we got an attorney on council.
Send you a bill for that.
We have a motion.
That'd be $350.
Second by McKeller. All right. Motion by McKeller, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you. And then did that also cover your articles?
It did.
The ordinance? Okay, just making sure.
I have to look at the attorney, the other attorney.
It covers everything?
We're good.
We're good.
We're good.
Perfect. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Now that I know we have the opportunity to do adjustments on the fly, I'm going to ask for a little further increase in what I was presenting, so I'm kind of excited about what this might look like.
Good morning, all. Mayor, council, city manager. I'm here this morning to present to you a request for a, an increase in land lease rates out at the airport. As you all know, we are pretty much expected to maintain self-sufficiency in terms of our budget, which requires us to have a rate and charge schedule that really keeps up with expenses, grows with the airport, continues to, to address all the increases that, that we see across the boards, you know, mainly in our operations and maintenance plan. What I have here is some data collected. This is actually from a study last year, so the gap here has probably only grown. And what it shows is that our rates and charges for land lease rates are very much on the low end of the spectrum. We had a great discussion with our airport advisory board. There was really no opposition to this request of a one cent across-the-board increase, and instead, the, the discussion really centered around should the increase even be greater? We decided to keep it at this, this one cent that I'll display here in a second, but I wanted to share this data from similarly sized airports in the area, and we've also looked at airports really across the country. I, I can't find another airport out there that has a lower lease rate than us that's in a comparable situation to our airport. In addition, during our master planning process this year, we spent some time with a consultant that was able to sit down and look at our revenue generation by different cost centers and really showed there was somewhat of an imbalance. Basically, it comes down to are the, the primary users of the airport really paying for the expenses at the airport? And that's another reason that we would like to make this adjustment. What it leads to is you can, I'll give you a moment to read that, but basically, an increase of one cent in our three different lease rates, which will yield close to a $20,000 increase for our budget next year. I'll give you a moment to read that. And with that, I will ask, it's pretty straightforward, and again, we've had some great discussion with the advisory board. Do you all have any questions about or comments about this request?
What is a fuel farm for five and a half cents to six and a half cents? What does that, what does that mean per square foot? Fuel farm?
I have a great deal of data with me, but I don't have that piece, sir. So, I've got square footage of all the different leased space, but not the fuel farm. So, I can get back to you with that?
Not just alignments?
Yeah, described. So, the fuel farm is the, is the area, it's basically enclosed within a fence behind our maintenance shop where we keep large tanks where the fuel is stored. So, we, we charge for that space, we lease out that space that is used for the storage of the fuel. It's a relatively small area when you talk about these huge spaces for hangers and all that, but I apologize for not having the exact square footage.
Well, we can, well, I mean, next year or the year after that, will we continue to look at these numbers to, you know, get us more in the line with other airports?
Absolutely, and, and we did a similar increase last year. I stated at that time, my goal is not to be anywhere near the top of this pack. We do have other areas to increase, but the answer is we will absolutely address this next year. Just to be transparent, my, we've got some other avenues. I would love to maybe see one additional increase, but then look at some other avenues such as fleet, fuel flowage that we collect, but this will be an ongoing process, but we don't have a, a very high target that we're trying to reach to necessarily.
Stephen, but maybe describe to him, because I know that the council before asked about just incremental increases and how the airport advisory board, this, this is actually a continuing recurring increase that the airport advisory board has put forward, so that goes all the way to 2027?
Yes, sir. So, many years ago, what was put in the ordinance was the ability to increase by a half cent or whatever rate is deemed by the advisory board or recommended therefore. So, it could be that half cent or more. And if I'm answering that correctly, that, I believe, started in 2016. There was a pause, but we have had an increase, we had an increase of one cent last year, and I believe it was a half cent the year before that. So, as it slowly increases, that one cent becomes a smaller percentage of the overall cost, of course, but it is within the ordinance to be able to continue to do this up through 2027. If we get, you know, again, no guarantee that we need to ask for a request, an increase next year, and when 2027 comes, we will probably readdress the situation at that time.
Your leasing's realized what a really good deal you're giving them.
You know, in all the discussions I've had, it's really hard. If anybody can bring to us an example of a similarly sized airport with lower rates, I'd be, I would love to take a look at it. I think that, that most folks understand it's, it's been a pretty good, a very fair rate structure, and nobody likes an increase is, is what I commented last year. But, but I think at the end of the day, they understand that it's, it's, it's money well-spent, and most of the tenants are able to spread that cost across, you know, multiple folks that they then turn around and lease space or hangar space to, so.
And your occupancy rate now is still 100%?
Yes, yep. It's, I can't give you the exact number, but there, I'm told there are waiting lists to get into some of the various hangers, and to my knowledge, there's very little, if any, hangar space available.
And you do have room to grow that, don't you? Land use-wise, you can grow hangar space?
We do. In particular, I've got about a 30-acre tract that we're very actively pursuing additional hangar development on right now.
And do we work with the, with Scott Martinez and his group on that? They, they know about that?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions for Steve?
Move to approve O2.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynne. Okay, we're going to do something different. When asked for the vote, we're going to ask, we're going to be very, we're not going to be lethargic, we're going to be very enthusiastic. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's for you.
I'll, I'll take that excitement back to the airport for this rate change and let folks know that it was unanimously and energetically supported.
Stephen, didn't you just have another great inspection also this year?
We did.
Fast flying, Coach?
Yes, yes. Another reflection that this type of an investment is money well-spent, because our team turned a zero discrepancy FAA inspection last month.
And once again, as a Marine Corps officer that inspects you, correct?
It was, yes, sir.
Great, we meet our standards.
Yes, we looked at lots of pictures.
Congratulations.
And our most recent hire as a technician is a Marine reservist as well, so we are supporting.
I feel better.
And the council person that has that district is a Army, United States Army. That would be me.
Outstanding. Very good, man.
So, we'll do, we'll need this discussion after the meeting?
That'd be a fight.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, we're in record approval, correct?
Yes. Appreciate it. All right, we're down to the consent agenda, do we want an approval as presented?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. That was a tie.
Give me a break, that has got on the record today.
Okay, we got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to have Kate come join us, man. We're going to talk about the kind of water main line, lake line, water main line break from Monday morning. But a couple of other projects, you've got Thompson Avenue and Barger Street are finished. This was a half-cent project that salvaged approximately 101,015 historic bricks for use elsewhere in the future. The storm drain system was failing over on Thompson Street, as y'all may remember, and so we were able to replace that as well as the water lines, water tap and water services in that area, as well as the sewer main, sewer taps and sewer services. We also had sidewalks and improved other sidewalks that are in that area with the goal of not needing to cut this new asphalt pavement for years and encourage some of the redevelopment in this part of Tyler, as you kind of go towards Beckham in our downtown area. And so, it is something where we've already, if you go through it and you take a look at it, you can deceive some of the neighborhood pride that's already there and that's been contagious for each of those different homeowners. Also, the Keaton Avenue drainage project that's being funded by half-cent sales tax project, and that's outbidding right now. And so, this is in Councilman Curtis's district. The problem's been water overtopping the channel at Keaton Avenue and flowing down Keaton Avenue and down Shepherd Lane, back in the channel of Shepherd Lane for years, and been a bit of a flooding problem at times. And so, we're diverting flows from the channel at Keaton, down the storm drains in Keaton, and back to the enlarged concrete channel from Shepherd to Windwood. We're also doing some erosion repair in the natural channel between Keaton and Bang Place. And so, we're looking forward to some good pricing on that one, hopefully, and get that project coming to council very soon. And so, with that, like I said, Tyler Water Utilities Director Kate Dietz is, I kind of asked her if she would just kind of join to just kind of give a bit of a brief to the council. As she was describing earlier, Monday morning, you know, about 7:30 a.m., we started seeing water tanks start to drop in what is primarily the western part of Tyler. And then Tyler Water Utilities jumped on it very quickly to try to determine where the leak was. It's in West Conson, Sam's Club over there at Earl Campbell and the loop, they quickly found it with, you know, part of the traffic lane of the loop and that turn lane on Earl Campbell collapsed, and, and then kind of rushing out, and then they took work in closing off the valves. So, I'll let kind of Kate describe it from here, as far as the work that went into that.
Yeah, so, when it was located on Monday, it was actually located by a tech stop, a tech stop team had been out there doing an overlay in that turn lane. And I think they were picking up traffic control at the time, and, and he saw some water coming up through the valve. So, since that time when we found, when we located it, I, the, the Sam's parking lot was inundated with water. It was a massive break. The hole is, is very large. Right now, we, it has been fixed, so the, the water is on and in that particular area. We are still under a boil water notice because we are waiting on the samples to be reported back from the lab. Those were submitted yesterday at 5:00 p.m., so we're very thankful to the Net Health Lab for staying open to, to take those samples from us, so we could start running that. So, we'll find out today if these back T samples come back, as we all hope they, they do and they should. Water clarity was good throughout the rest of the system, so we are very hopeful that we'll be able to lift today. AE Shoal is doing the repair for us. It's, as I said, very extensive damage to the, the roadway in that area, so we're also working with Tech Stop, partnering with them, talking about options about how we repair. Obviously, we want to get Tech Stop involved as well in that, so we've already been in discussions with them. And, but right now, we're hopeful, we're looking good, so.
So, do the tank, elevated tanks have to be filled back up to get the proper pressure?
Yeah, we actually don't believe that we lost all, you know, all pressure in the tanks, because there was still, in the riser, there was still water there. We got a lot of reports from people in a, in a particular area, we were able to say, these people were calling and saying that they were having pressure issues. And the two tanks that had lost a lot of pressure and didn't really have much water in the bowl of the tank, those were West Second and North Glenwood over in that area. So, but based on the distribution system, we were able to locate which areas would have lost pressure based on those tanks losing that much water.
Once the valves returned, so that the, the leak was stopped, we were able to then kind of divert the water system to be able to start to get the water back up in the bowls, which was done relatively quickly then.
We were very pleased with the response time of the system, yeah.
Kate, can you explain to the community why we have to have a boil, boil water throughout the city, even though many people say, well, it's over at Sam's, so why do we have to boil water on the other side of the city?
It's a good question. So, we, the boil water notice in this, for instance, because we lost pressure, you know,[1761.03] we lost pressure, you know, per the TCQ, when we lose pressure under 20 PSI in our distribution system, it's a precautionary measure. There's the potential, if your lines aren't pressurized to above 20 PSI, that, you know, something could get in. And so it really is just a precautionary measure at that point. And the reason we kind of focused on the west side was because the east side of the city was very, you know, as far as pressures go, remained healthy. Like, we did not lose a lot, we have Golden Road out there. Most of the, most of the issues we saw were on the west side, so we were very conservative in the area that we included in the boil water notice, so.
So you're saying the entire city was not?
No, the entire city was not. It was just the west portion of the city and GIS helped us come up with a web map so people could search their address to see if they were included in or not, but no, it was just a portion in the west part of the city.
Kate, two questions for you. Once you identify a main leak like that, someone has a map, someone has where the valve is to cut it off, so you get it cut off, then you identify the problem. All the construction that has been taking place in that area, could that play a role in it or was it just a fail in one of our lines?
That's a very difficult question to answer. I would say that there is no direct evidence that it was caused by any construction in the area, but you are right, there was a lot of construction going on. But based on our investigation, which we're still looking at, we don't have any evidence of it being caused by construction.
From discussions with the contractor who's working on it, the original installer as well, you know, he talked about the fact that, you know, we've had, with the amount of rain that we've had recently, that one, you know, could the vibrations from the Tech Stop equipment may have been a contributing factor as well? We don't know. Probably more likely not, but, you know, so it is, it seems to be just a fail, but again, investigation is needed.
And it's hard to tell because there's a lot of Tech Stop stormwater infrastructure under there as well and as soon as, but it's different from a sewer main break because when a sewer main break happens, it doesn't flood like that. I mean, it was, all of the damage got washed out, all the evidence went, you know, left, so it's hard to determine.
Yeah, there are two large culverts that go underneath that water line there that in the Tech Stop right of way as well that, so, you know, there's, one seems to be in good shape, the other one seems to have a bit of a bend or problem with it, so we're going to look to make sure those get fixed up, you know, talk to Tech Stop to get that done while everything's open, but that also could be part of the contributing factor.
What's the age of that line?
In 1955. That's, that's when that line was put in.
All right, any other comments for Kate?
As we move forward with the emergency action plans and public education for the generations that follow, is there any effort or any place in our plan where we can teach those coming behind us on how to boil water?
Boil.
We feel that's a trick.
I feel like, yeah.
I mean, with all the eating out and food preparation, never mind.
All right, any other questions? Any other real questions for Kate?
I wish I had a picture of your face, Kate.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
You work very hard to answer questions at some moment, just.
City manager, you through your report?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. All right, with nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, adjourn.
You want to teach him how to boil bottled water?